My name is Barb Ferguson. I am the president of the League of Women Voters of Holland area. And on behalf of the league, I would like to welcome all of you here. We're so excited to have such a good crowd. We didn't expect to run out of chairs, but I think every chair from every plot has been moved out. Thanks for being flexible. We'd like to thank all of you for coming. Our goal is to provide voters with an opportunity to see and hear the candidates so that you're able to make an informed choice on election day. And we'd like to thank all the candidates. I think that we have 18 candidates here tonight, which is remarkable. We hope that this provides an opportunity for you to meet the voters and to tell the voters your story and your goals. They'll have an opportunity to talk with you individually afterwards. The format for tonight is that each of the candidates will have three minutes to talk. You don't have to use all three minutes. And then, once we've heard from all of the candidates, the candidates will each go to their tables, and you can move around the room and ask questions individually of the candidates. So that's the format for this evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters Voter Services Committee, and especially to Paula Edwards, who has put this whole thing together and organized. So, a little bit about the League of Women Voters. Our organization was founded in 1920 to help voters register, to learn how to vote, and to be informed about issues and candidates. Our mission after 104 years remains the same: to empower voters through education. The League is a nonpartisan organization. We do not support candidates, nor do we oppose candidates. We provide opportunities for voters to learn about the candidates by sponsoring events like tonight's Meet and Greet. We hope to sponsor several other similar events throughout the summer. Please watch our website. You can find the information there. I'll be the moderator for tonight's evening. Before we introduce the candidates and give them an opportunity to speak, I'm going to review the rules. Each of the candidates here this evening has received these rules and signed agreements. Each participating candidate will have three minutes for a candidate statement. The order of who speaks first and second will be determined by the district number in alphabetical order of the candidate's last names within each district. Candidates agree not to engage in personal attacks. We want to hear what you believe in, not about what you think about anybody else. The League reserves the right to publicize the event and may, at their option, invite media. And we do have media here tonight. Both the Sentinel and the Grand Rapids Press are here.
And the Tribune.
And the Tribune. The event will be recorded, and it will be available on our YouTube channel. And you can find a link to the YouTube channel on our website. In accordance with FCC rules, it will be shown unedited and in its entirety. Feel free to send the link to constituents and supporters after the event. The League claims copyright ownership of any recordings or transcripts produced. The recording may not be edited for campaign purposes. The candidates and their supporters agree not to use any Meet and Greet audio clips, video clips, or partial transcripts for political advertising or other purposes without the express written permission of the League of Women Voters of the Holland area. So now, if you have cell phones, would you turn them off? Or any electronic devices? Our timekeeper for tonight is Shirley DeClare. She's here in the front row. Candidates, you need to pay attention to her. She has two signs. One that will give you a signal when there's 30 seconds remaining, and then one that says "stop." So if you see the stop sign, finish your sentence, and then you're done. We want to acknowledge that all candidates who have filed to run for the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners have been invited. There are several incumbent candidates who had a conflict of interest tonight because of the Lincoln Day dinner. We hope that you'll have an opportunity to hear all of the candidates throughout the summer with additional events. Ooh, sorry. Before the August election. So we'll really focus on providing those opportunities for you. Vote411 is another great resource. It's our online voter guide. So now, it's time to introduce all of our candidates. I think, for the sake of time, we'll just go and have you come up and talk. Okay? One by one. So Jim Berry is running in District 1. So he's our first speaker.
What a crowd. I'm so glad everybody's here tonight. Let me begin by introducing myself. My name is Jim Berry. I grew up in the Holland-Zealand area. I'm a graduate of Zealand High School, and I earned a Bachelor of Science from Grand Valley State University. My wife, Flies, and I have been married for 17 years. As of next month, it'll be 17 years. We have four grown kids, and two of the cutest grandkids you ever saw. And I'm a realtor. I've been with Caldwell Banker for 10 years, where I'm also a licensed associate broker. Before that, I was involved as a financial advisor for 20 years. I've always been involved with the community. For 15 years, I was part township representative to the Herod District Library Board of Trustees. And most of that time, I served as treasurer to the board. I previously served on the Executive Committee of the Grand Valley State University Alumni Association. I'm active with my church, Grace Episcopal Church in Holland, where I've served on vestry, served as church treasurer, and am currently Chair of our Endowment Board there. I think I've demonstrated experience in community involvement, board experience, handling financial issues. And that leads me to why I'm running, to be a county commissioner. First of all, I'm an independent-thinking conservative Republican. The only pledge I'm going to sign is with the voters of the 1st District. Ottawa County has, for a long time, had a reputation for being a well-run, slightly boring county government. I don't think that's the case today. Like many of you, I've become concerned about governance issues since the beginning of 2023. I won't go through the litany of issues because we all signed a promise to be nice. And I think this crowd in particular is pretty aware of the issues. Let me say, I'm committed to fiscal responsibility because tax dollars are precious. I'm committed to transparency because confidence in leadership requires acting in a way that's above reproach. Finally, good governance requires embracing best practices in hiring, doing expenditures, budgeting, human resources, and so much more. So I'm running to get back to steady, competent leadership that will serve all the citizens of Ottawa County. And I'm so thankful to see such a great crowd here. And we'll see you all in August.
Also running for, in District 1, is Danielle Smith.
All right. I want to first say thank you all for coming out tonight. This is really a pleasure to be here, to speak with all of you, and to see this many people getting involved in our community. I first want to give a brief background about myself and who I am. I'm a mom of two teenage daughters, at West Ottawa High School. I have 25 years of experience in HR, the last five of which have been at the top executive level. I'm an active member of the community. I've been in Holland for 15 years, participating in various nonprofits, as well as professional organizations. I've got my husband of 22 years standing over there, who was, he is my campaign manager, and has been very active in the community and a huge supporter of me. In terms of my core values, I really break it down into four areas. I care deeply about integrity and respect. I'm a continuous learner. I want to continue to grow myself and learn from others. I collaborate. I work in teams. And finally, I'm pretty competitive. I like to win. I like our community having that solid, strong, leading reputation. So why do I feel that I can do this job? I have, I feel like I can effectively apply my personal and life experiences along with my professional experiences to improving our community. I have deep experience in building consensus across stakeholder groups. I've managed multimillion-dollar global budgets. But more importantly, I bring energy and passion to the wellbeing of our community. I previously ran for this seat a year and a half ago, and there was a threat of change, and maybe change in the wrong direction. Over this past year and a half, we've seen that happen. We've seen a degradation in services that our community members demand and deserve. We've also seen depleting resources and funds of our budget, and we have negative press nationally. When I'm elected, I'm committed to promoting good governance, both ethically and financially. I want to reinvest in services for our community and restore our county's reputation. Finally, I'm somebody who collaborates across party lines. I don't believe that this should be a partisan office. I am committed to working with everybody to come together, align, and move forward in a positive direction. I think what we're going to hear tonight is a lot of us here have similar views. Right? We all care about the same things. We're campaigning on many of the same verbs and buzzwords. Please stop by tonight. I want to hear about your priorities and your concerns. Thank you.
The third candidate in District 1 is Chris Van Der Seis.
What an amazing crowd. This is unbelievable to me. But anyway, I am Chris Van Der Seis. I live in West Olive with my wife in the green dress over there. We've been married for 24 years. We have six kids, three at home, so we, three have flipped the glue. Flipped the hoop. I'm running for District 1 Commissioner. I was born in Grand Haven, graduated from Grand Haven High School, and then attended the Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs. I graduated the top 20% of my class there, and was one of 70 to go to the NATO pilot training out of a class of 1,000. In the Air Force, I flew the A-10 in combat combat support over Iraq and Korea. I instructed new fighter pilots in the T-38, worked at the Air Force Personnel Center, and got to work assured combat capability for the combat units and also executive development for senior officers. Also, I worked as a program manager, responsible for contracts in the hundreds of millions of dollars. And I'm currently a Boeing 767 pilot at FedEx. I give you this list because I believe my experience with complex problems has prepared me a good steward for the county, the issues that we're facing in the county. If you're like me, historically, you didn't pay a whole lot of attention to county politics or what was going on there unless you hit a pothole or your taxes went up. In fact, I wouldn't even be able to tell you who my commissioner was back then. And my apologies to Frank Garcia in the back. That changed just over a year ago, though. As I looked out at what was happening, I saw rules and protocol being ignored in pursuit of goals. And it really, it hurt. It's not how things are supposed to be. In the Air Force, in my whole time, you have to follow, no matter what the goal is or you're going to a target, you have to follow the protocols and the rules to get there. And although some people, many people, can make arguments about what the goals, if they're desirable or not, the aftermath, the financial aftermath and the fairness level is just not there. Ottawa County citizens deserve better. And my demonstrated leadership and service, in my opinion, can provide that. I'm Chris Van Der Seis. I'm running for District 1. And I'm happy to talk to you over there. And I would like to hear a vote. Thank you.
We have two candidates running for District 2. First of all, Chris Klinejans.
It's a tough thing. I mean, I'm used, I'm just getting used to it, too. Good evening. My name is Chris Klinejans, and I'm running in the 2nd District Special Recall Election against Commissioner Lucy Evil, taking place in 19 days. Yes, on May the 7th. I'd like to thank the Holland League of Women Voters for the invitation to attend tonight's event. And I also want to thank them for 55 years of doing exemplary work in defending democracy and empowering voters in the Holland area. Except for my time in military service, I've spent my life in Ottawa County, where my family settled nearly 200 years ago. My 25-year career in nonprofit work has been spent in the county, both in the cultural and social service basis, serving our neighbors. Currently, my work takes me into every corner of the county, allowing me to engage and learn from every community inside our borders. My experience as a member of the Advisory Board of Ottawa Food and the Community Health of Ottawa County Board of Directors has reinforced my core belief that we, as a community, get more accomplished through collaboration than division and isolation. The district I hope to represent is incredibly diverse and small, filled with hardworking people striving to make their way towards their definition of success. Like any number of candidates here, I entered this race as a direct result of what I had seen taking place up at Fillmore since January 3rd, 2023. Well, perhaps more directly because I was also a member of the committee that guided last year's successful recall effort that put my election on the ballot. Even though I've lived in the 2nd for almost 30 years, those first conversations I had with residents during the signature gathering reopened my eyes to the energetic, complex, forward-leaning, and multi-everything tapestry that is the 2nd. It made me wonder if the spirit of service that has always been my motivation could possibly be used to help my neighbors achieve their dreams. I've knocked over 1,500 doors in the last seven weeks, and I've met more of my neighbors than has only reaffirmed my decision to help bring our County Board of Commissioners, Commissioners back to a body which elevates sound governance for all, transparency in its decision-making, and support for the institutions that assist our most vulnerable residents. I feel to the bedrock of my being that the representation of my District 2 community should be equal to the desires of that community for a better tomorrow. And my efforts as their commissioner would be equal to the work they're putting in to make that a future for their families and their neighborhoods. That future comes not through thought, comes through thoughtful action, open dialogue, and returning to looking forward to the challenges and opportunities that lie ahead, not the hunt. Thank you.
Jordan Joritzma is also the other candidate for District 2. And I'm sorry I goofed up the alphabetical order.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jordan Joritzma. Thank you all for coming. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. This is an incredible crowd. And I think what we're doing here is especially incredible. Coming to hear about what you want your county to look like. That's what this is really about. So a little bit about me. I'm a North Side of Holland native. That's where the 2nd District is. I've lived there my whole life. I went to Holland Christian High School, went to Calvin, where I graduated with a degree in economics. I now work in Lansing for a state representative, and I'm a legislative director. So I get to work on legislation that helps improve the state. And that's really what my passion is for. I want to make Ottawa County, make the state of Michigan, even better. I've gotten to work on legislation that improves public safety. I've gotten to work on legislation that helps the foster care system and straightlines that process. I've got to work on legislation that lowers taxes. And a big thing that I'm also passionate about is student mental health. And that's a huge crisis we have right now. And I've got to work on legislation that helps that, too. So, like people are going to say all night, we're here for transparency, sound government, fiscal responsibility. And I have a passion for all those things as well. Hope to bring those things to Ottawa County. Sorry, bring them back to Ottawa County. And I hope to earn your vote. So I'm not going to take too much of your time. I think it's important that you hear from everyone here and then that you get a chance to ask questions. So come find me. I'd love to talk to you. I'd love to hear what you guys care about. But thank you for having me. And we look forward to seeing you for the rest of the night. Thank you.
And the candidate for District 3 is Doug Zilestr.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. This is a sort of great event. So just give yourself applause real quick because I am so thankful to see so many people. Thank you, fellow candidates, for showing up. I think we're all here because of one big thing, because we love Ottawa County, right? I grew up in Ottawa County. Grew up on the East Side, more towards Georgetown Township. Moved to Holland late 90s. Moved away, came back in 2010. I love living in the city of Holland. Love representing city of Holland residents. So if you're District 3 residents, thank you very much for your support. Danielle, thank you very much as well. One of the hallmarks of Ottawa County government, and Phil knows this well, is high-quality service at the best affordable rate, right? We have had the lowest mileage of almost any county in Michigan, but residents say we have the highest quality services that county government can offer. The reason why I run, I ran back in 2014, ran in 2016, ran in 2018, when I finally won, was to make sure that the board had a wide gamut of voices. I am, as the Sentinel will point out, the only Democrat currently on the board. There are other Democrats running here, so hopefully that changes. But currently, the only Democrat. And I think that's worked well. You know, we need to open up the voices on the board. Right now, we have 11 commissioners. I've enjoyed working with all 11 current commissioners. I don't always think that we are taking into account the views of all 300,000 residents, right? I think we've done some good things. County-wide broadband has been good. We are continuing to work on housing. Not as quickly as I would hope. One of the things that we did when Phil was on the board, $10 million for the housing fund, right? We have the housing commission that's up. We need to make sure those $10 million are working in this community so that there are housing opportunities for everyone in Ottawa County. Hopefully, when we have a board that I think represents Ottawa County in its totality, we're going to have more movement forward on that. So we can have housing opportunities for workforce, folks coming into the workplace, disabled housing. There is so much demand here in Ottawa County for that. That is one of the main reasons why I ran, one of the main reasons why I got work to help set up the housing commission at the beginning, and one of the key things we want to keep working on as we go forward. So thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
We have two candidates who are running for the District 4 seat. Jacob Bonema is the first one who will speak.
Doug, excellent. Just want to echo a lot of what Doug said. Really appreciated the fact that we exist to make sure that the citizens of Ottawa County are receiving excellent service and are respected equally. And that's something that we've really talked a lot about this year. So I'm Jacob Bonema, District 4. You are in District 4, so welcome. This is the home of Gentex and Zealand Farm Services and Herman Miller and Howard Miller. So many excellent companies that employ so many of us and have provided the tax base and resources to do so many great things in our community. I'm 46 years old. I'm one of the incumbents. Myself and Doug are the two incumbents that are here tonight. We have a commissioner that's also running, and Phil Kyers, that has more experience than all of us put together. But I'm excited to be with you. Married 26 years, five kids that went to Zealand Public Schools. I raised all of them about three blocks that way, in the downtown. I love my community, and that's why I ran. I'm a strong person of faith. And you know, when you study about how to give back, you talk a lot about tithing. You learn about tithing. And what is tithing? A lot of times, we think of tithing as just monetary. I think of it as my life. What do I mean by that? Life is L, your labor. I is your influence. F is your finances. And E is your expertise. So as I've built multiple companies and served on many boards, I've got over 25 years of experience on boards, both for-profit and nonprofit. I really felt like I was a uniquely qualified person to serve the voices of District 4. Do we have some folks here from District 4 tonight? That would be Zealand, Zealand Township, and parts of Holland Township. I'm seeing some hands. Good deal. All right. I'm going to be back here. But let me share one of my first priorities. Right when I came into office, I looked at what was going on as far as public safety in my community. I went to the Director of Emergency Management, Lou Hunt, and I asked him three questions. First, I asked him just to brag on his department. Tell me everything good about your employees because I want to be proud with you. Second one was, how have you worked well with commissioners in the past? Because I want to learn how to work with you in a way that's successful. And the third is, if you'd be willing to, share one of your biggest concerns so that I can shoulder it with you. He told me about the fact that in 2018, the firefighters all over Ottawa County lost their ability to fight chemical fires. I asked him, well, where's the biggest exposure of chemical fires in Ottawa County? He said, well, they're all over. They're everywhere. But the biggest one is in downtown Zealand. I said, well, I live in downtown Zealand. What are we talking about? Well, I'm very proud that we worked together to figure out the solution, which was fire foam fighting, or, let's see. Yeah, chemical fire fighting foam trailer. It's a tongue twister, but it's trailers filled with fire foam that will allow us to fight those chemical fires. And that's not been able to happen before. And Zealand is safer because of it. So I'm happy for that. I sleep a little bit better at night, and I hope you do, too. My website is jacobbonema.com.
The other candidate for District 4 is Chris Brothers.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for putting this on. This is amazing. Look at all these people out here. I am very, obviously, not a gifted public speaker, but thankfully, that is not a requirement of this. Hopefully, this speech gives you a good idea of who I am and what I bring to the table. I grew up in Zealand. I went to Woodbridge, City Side, Zealand East. Did some college and ended up in manufacturing, doing CNC programming and CAD and process planning. Then in 2015, I took a marine class, and my life has never been the same. Mind you, at that point, I was not a big beer drinker, but I fell in love with the science and the process and the creative problem-solving that beer making required. But most of all, I fell in love with how inviting the craft beer community was. For the last five years, I've been the head brewer and member of leadership at Tulip City Brewstillery and Hoplin Brewstillery. I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of amazing staff and a lot of amazing local organizations, like Latin Americans United for Progress, Women of Color Give, Out on the Lakeshore, I Am Academy, Brazilians. One of the most important parts of my work with Tulip City and Hoplin was to help cultivate a space where our diverse local community could find belonging, no matter what neighborhood they came from. As a white male who grew up in Zealand, I was not exposed to a lot of perspectives or cultures, life experiences. I've grown as I've worked with these community organizations and gleaned a lot of great information, especially as we endured the pandemic together. I continue to grow because diversity and inclusivity are core values of mine, and they should be core values of our government. This is one of the many reasons I've taken so many of the actions of our current board so personally. I was appalled by the dismantling of the DEI department. I was appalled by the changing of our county slogan from "Where You Belong." As your county commissioner, I promote true transparency and promise to be open and honest about the intentions and also the potential side effects of commissioners' actions. I'll prioritize collaboration with experts in our community. And I'll work hard to keep open lines of communications with our community so that I'm accessible to my constituents and make sure their voices are heard. I'm Chris Brothers, and I hope to get your vote this November.
We have one candidate from District 5. Mark. We have one candidate from District Five, Mark Northridge.
Good evening. I have a speech here, but I'm not going to give it because we're all saying the same thing here, and it gets tiring. First of all, I'm extremely humbled and privileged to be standing here. It didn't happen by accident that I happened to be here, and I appreciate the League of Voters and their due diligence in inviting all of us to be here. And I'm privileged to be standing here in front of my colleagues, and I hopefully can serve with some of them here next year. Whether we like it or not, we've become a ground zero, a national issue here about the polarization in our country. And if you watch CNN, or MSNBC, or Fox News, or whatever, wherever you go, and by the way, you're not home tonight watching that, you're here, it feeds on us, and it's not healthy. We have so much virtual signaling. And the virtual signaling we're hearing right now in our county is faith, family, and faith, freedom, and family, right? Now, that's just virtual signaling. It's a lot of words. They sound really nice, folks, but I'm calling phony. I'm calling phony, folks. And let me tell you, I mean, I've got a whole list here, but the one that really hits for me, we closed the food banks. I mean, we're better than this. This is not who we are. This is not the county that I want to be in if we close food banks. How did we get here? Now, I think most of you know who I am. I'm a bit loud-naff, I admit it. Everybody wants me to say what I have to say, but I am what I am, folks. I've been privileged to have been the mayor of Hudsonville. It's been a great community. I drive through Zeeland and go, wow, I want to do that in my city too, where Zeeland's here. Because they have a great city too. We have a great county. And I just hope that I can be the commissioner for the fifth district, work with my brothers and sisters up here, and have a new future of goodness and kindness and empathy. Thank you very much.
For District Six, we have one candidate, Sean Haff.
Well, there's always one thing you can't prepare for. I wasn't quite sure what to do about the microphone here, because I wasn't quite prepared for that. But I've been told I have a big enough mouth, so I'm just not going to really be holding onto the microphone. I'm Sean Haff. I'm in District Six, Georgetown Township. I've lived in Ottawa County for 40 years. The other 10 years, I decided I wanted to travel and see interesting places, so I lived in Kent County. I went to Jamestown Elementary. I was home schooled for two years. I went to Grand Valley State University. Okay, well, that's a first. I guess I don't have a big enough mouth. All right. So I went to Jamestown Elementary. I went to Grand Valley State University. I went to law school in Grand Rapids as well. I'm running to focus on a positive conservative message for my district. Conservative shouldn't be a dirty 12-letter word. It's been given a bad reputation, and that's upsetting to me. And what I mean by that is I'm going to run on fiscal responsibility. I'm not going to waste the county's time or money on quixotic attempts to remove the health officer. Like everybody else, I believe in transparency. If I am elected to be the county commissioner of District Six, I will not limit the amount of committee assignments out of spite for other members that are on the board. I will most definitely not censor another committee member over political disputes. I want to work with the best. I'm going to appoint people as your county commissioner based on merit and achievement. To quote my favorite college football coach, now coaching with the San Diego Chargers, iron sharpens iron. I want to work with the best. I don't want sycophants. I don't need people just to tell me what I want to hear. If somebody disagrees with me, I want to hear what your disagreement is, and let's look it over and see if we can solve the issue. As a lawyer, I'm hoping to use my legal training to help the county avoid lawsuits, and heaven knows we've had credit for those reasons. I want to reduce the size of government and the amount of influence it has over my people in District Six that it has over the daily lives of individuals. I will move cautiously and make sure we get things done right the first time. That way, we're not having to appoint another county administrator 14 years and deal with a federal lawsuit like we did with John Gibbs. I'm willing to discuss and talk with everybody in my district regardless of whether you're Republican, moderate, conservative, liberal, or Democrat. And I look forward to meeting and talking to you during the campaign trail over the next four months. Thank you.
For District Seven, we have one candidate, John Teeples.
I don't know if a lawyer can keep something in within three minutes. So first of all, thank you, I mean, League of Women Voters. This is a great, great public service. I am John Teeples. I am in District Seven, the north part of Georgetown. Two months ago, when I was trying to evaluate whether to get into this fray, my son called me and posed the great question. He said, Dad, if you're going to die three months or within four years, is this what you want to do? Is it worth it? I told him, yes. I said, I've been a lawyer for 38 years. I know I'm experienced, but the county has lost its way, and this is a cause that's worth my time and effort, and my family's time and effort, because it's that important, and I know I can make a difference. We all know that the last, in March, that we had the MLiS survey, and in that survey, it shows some troubling trends, of course. But two that really stand out is that a high percentage of our community view and believe that Ottawa Impact has made Ottawa County less welcoming and a worse place to live. Almost 56% of Republican voters over 65 do not trust Ottawa Impact to handle our money, our taxpayer finances. When my kids were little, my family, Sue and I, we've been married 42 years, we developed a family crest. This is our motto, motto as a family. What do we stand for? So as time went on with the kids, we didn't have to say to them, do this or do that. All we had to say to them is, remember who you are. Remember who you are. All through high school, all through college, when they're going on dates, whatever they do, remember who you are. They knew. They still know 20-plus years later. I think that we, as Ottawa County, have forgotten in ways lately, get confused about who we are. I think that we are forgotten that we're a community of strong Dutch heritage, of entrepreneurial, hard work, fiscal conservatives, and prudent stewards, a community that's the center, who's the center of sanctity of family, and a Christian commitment of service for something greater than ourselves. We've forgotten that we are a community that does not live in fear of our differences, but lives in hope for what we are. I don't have all the answers, but I promise I will represent everyone. Liberal Tom, who I met in the barber shop the other night, I'm going to represent you. You parents and grandparents who are concerned about parental rights, I'm going to represent you. And you first and second constitutional amendment advocates, I'm going to represent you. But remember this, we're a democracy where everyone has the lawful protected right to be heard and respected. We will do that. We will build together. But let's remember first who we are and move from there. Thank you.
In District Eight, one of the candidates is here tonight, Rebecca Patrick.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rebecca Patrick, representing, hoping to represent Allendale, District Eight as a Democrat. Is there anybody here from Allendale tonight, just out of curiosity? Okay, wow. I do have a speech, and I'm not afraid to use it, so here we go. So we're going to get right down to business. Why should you vote for me if you were in my district? There are two reasons. One is that I'm qualified, and the other one is that I have a vision for serving. So first of all, my qualification is, is that I care about county government, and I've been working effectively with others of both parties to improve it for more than a year now. Since January of '23, I've attended more than 70 county commissioner committee meetings. I've founded or led, together with some of you here in this room, four different grassroots organizing groups dedicated to restoring good governance in Ottawa County. I started a newsletter to explain commission activities to county residents and help get it distributed to 5,000 people every two weeks. The bottom line is, I care, and I care enough to use my skills and abilities to do something about it. My second qualification is that I understand government and I understand leadership. I spent my career in state government. I was the regional director for the Departments of Environmental Quality and Natural Resources, and I have a deep understanding of the limits and the authorities of government. So, next, what's my vision for service if I were to be elected? First, I want to champion trust and fiscal responsibility in county government. Officials earn people's trust when they enthusiastically follow the rule of law, when they avoid conflicts of interest, when they use transparent policies and predictable manners to make decisions, when they work together in good faith and in a collegial manner. These things are not difficult, but they are critical to ensuring that we have trust and fiscal responsibility in our government, and I will make them a priority. Second, I will support mental health and public health services because they both affect the quality of life for every resident of Ottawa County. I intend to repair the relationship with the public health department and restore as many public health services as possible using grant money where feasible. Likewise with mental health services, because one in five adults in the United States has a mental health diagnosis. Third, I will support and seek to expand the work being done on our groundwater shortage issues in Ottawa County. Allendale Township residents are disproportionately affected by this problem, and the reality is, having adequate and safe drinking water is not an option. So thank you, League of Women Voters, for making this event possible, to the other participants for making yourselves available, and to all of you for taking the time to become informed. And I hope to earn your vote if you can tell the people in Allendale Township.
We have two candidates from District Nine. First of all, Phil Kyers.
Thank you, and thank you, the Women of the League of Voters. I'm running into Rain County, the county back to when I was commissioner. I was commissioner for over 20 years. I bring leadership. You know, when I came there, I had mentors. They have no mentors now. You know, I worked with my mentors a lot to learn how to run a good county, you know? And working on that with my leadership, I also served as president of the Michigan Association of Counties, where I learned to serve both Dems and Republicans. I've served everybody in the state, and that's how it should be in Ottawa County. I run as a Republican. I've been a Republican all my life, you know? I grew up in Robson Township. I'm 65 years old, had four kids. I've been married to my wife Pam for 40 years. We have eight grandkids, always. We've got to live with that. What I bring back to the county is leadership. I have connections all over the state, not only the state, but federal and national also. I can call anybody that I know that can help the county grow. And that doesn't happen overnight. It took me a long time to establish some connections. So, also, you know what? Nobody talked about this tonight, but Parks. I've been a big Parks fan all my life. So, we talked about it, our minister did a couple weeks ago. I go to Covenant Life Church. He says, you know what brings you to God? Most people say Parks. Isn't it interesting? They go to Parks. So I've been on the Parks Board for over 20 years. I'm going to push the Parks harder all my life, because I think this is what Ottawa County is, you know? You know, it's where you live, it's where you belong. So, you know, I'm going to bring it back to where we belong. So, thank you very much.
Also, a candidate for District Nine is Angela Stanford Butler.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters. Women have been doing amazing things. My amazing trick tonight was, I don't know the password to my documents, so, winging it a little, but I really, number one, I wanted to tell everybody why I was running. A couple years ago, my neighbor and friend, Dr. Rob Davidson, was telling me, there's something going on, and you should pay attention. And I kept that in the back of my mind, and then I saw it. I saw the first sign. I'm in marketing and advertising. I've been in it for 30 years. I know how much a full-color board costs. These people had money, endless amounts of money and marketing. How are you going to fight? I think it was Mark. Family, freedom, who's going to say no? So I knew the incumbents were in for a fight, and they were. And we lost a lot of good people. But then I went to vote, only to discover that I didn't have a choice. There was no one else running. Dems weren't even in the fight. And I didn't know what to do, but I knew I was going to do something. So, I'm a boots-on-the-ground kind of girl. I've been knocking doors half my life, and that's what I thought I would be doing. I've collected signatures for recalls. I've tried to share and enlighten. I have to say, a lot of people are completely unengaged, and tonight is a thrill to see how engaged you people are, and thank you for being here. But, oh, I have something. Just crossing the divide and bringing people together and having something to change this, I said yes when Kim Nagy called and asked if I would run, and I thought, that's it. That's how I'm not going to let this happen again. While my experience is in marketing and advertising, I've also been in government. I was the DTA director under Chris Burns. It's always been my job to bring people together, change minds. I was in charge of the Tanglefoot redevelopment. People weren't happy about it until it was done. And I will say this before I go, as I've been winging it, I'm really looking forward to running against Phil Kyers.
And in District Ten, we have two candidates. First, Josh Bruegger.
Thank you very much. I'm probably the only candidate wearing a hoodie tonight. My name is Josh Bruegger. I am running for District Ten Commissioner. If you read the Holland Sentinel, I have to thank Sarah Leach for the headline, "Josh Bruegger, the man who wants to fill Roger Bergman's shoes and make government boring, reliable, and predictable again." That is true, and that's exactly what we need. I am a student of political science. I graduated from Hope College in 2000, where I met my wonderful wife. I believe in the Constitution and all 27 amendments, not just the second or the first. There are 27. Especially tonight, with the League of Women Voters, we'd like to focus on the 19th Amendment. And I know I only have three minutes, but the 18th Amendment, I'm going to ignore that one. Prohibition of alcohol, just in case. Now, I believe that we are at a unique spot in our county's history, and I hope to bring my experience to the county level. I want to let Phil and, you know, what's your name over there? Doug, Doug. Yeah, those guys. Chris is a good guy. For the last five years, I have served on the Ottawa County Brownfield and Economic Development Committee. And for those of you who know my history, I started out with AmeriCorps, with Habitat for Humanity, with the Zoning Board of Appeals in the city of Grand Haven, Planning Commission in the city of Grand Haven, and I was elected to city council. Throughout my tenure, I have always fought hard for housing affordability. I know the power of home and what a difference that makes in the lives of everyone, but especially children. If you want to talk about mental health issues and excelling in school, housing is where you start. Tonight, and I did have a speech planned too, and I apologize, I lost the password. I don't even know where it is. I just came from our Ottawa County, our Housing and Brownfield I just came from our Ottawa County, our Housing and Brownfield Committee meeting, three hours ago, and for Doug and Phil who fought for that $10 million, thank you. MISTDA, state of Michigan, changed some of their legislation as it applies to brownfields. By the way, this is some of the expertise that I hope to bring to Ottawa County. Previously, a brownfield was only available, brownfield funding was only available if you were working on a business or polluted property. I have only 30 seconds left, I can't possibly do this. Tonight, we, for the first time, approved a grant in Hudsonville, Mark.
Yes, thank you.
For you.
Thank you.
That will build 140 housing units, of which, and this is the first time, 25% of them will be income-based housing. That's the expertise that I hope to bring, and I've run out of time. So Josh Bruegger, District 10, boring, reliable, predictable, thank you.
And also in District 10, Doug Benicum.
Hi, I'm Douglas Benicum, I've lived in the Grand Haven area all my life, and I'm running for county commission in the 10th district, which is Grand Haven, Moses Spring Lake Township, and the city of Ferrisburg. A lot of what I'd like to say has already been covered by the other candidates, especially the issues that the current board has with accountability and transparency to the public, so I'll keep my remarks brief. But, yeah, I've lived in Grand Haven all my life, I went to Grand Valley, where I got a double major in history of criminal justice, and right now I work at the local mayor. I come from a blue-collar family background, and I would like to bring that perspective to the current board, because I think it's something that's lacking. I feel that the working-class people of the county are underrepresented, and think that I could better represent them when it comes to issues around jobs and housing that I feel that the current board is not focusing on, instead focusing on their own pet issues. And, yeah, that's about it, thank you.
And lastly, District 11, we have two candidates, Sarah Bejama is first.
Hi. So I actually did not write a speech, just because I'm terrible at following them, but what I will tell you is, I'm probably not, I think I am the only one, actually. I wasn't born in this town, I wasn't born in Ottawa County, I was born to military parents overseas. We moved back to the United States when I was almost three years old. We lived in LA for a little bit, and, which is where my dad immigrated from Mexico. They settled in Southern California when he was a kid, he was very political out there, worked a lot with getting people registered to vote and having a voice in what is happening around in their community. He decided that they wanted to raise their children somewhere else, and we moved to West Michigan. And I grew up in Coopersville, I graduated from Coopersville High School, went to Michigan State University, I have a degree in business, but I also actually have a degree in German, because that was super useful. I actually took German, because I spoke Spanish at home, and so I needed something else. But anyway. I've been complaining to my parents about what's happening here. My dad has always been involved in politics, especially in Ottawa County, he has been on a lot of boards, he worked closely with the schools, he actually ran for the school board just so he could give me my diploma, which was pretty amazing. When I was complaining about what was happening and everything around here, and how frustrated I was with things that were being done, you know, he always reminded me that our motto my entire life growing up was, if you're unhappy about something, then you need to do something about it. If you don't do anything about it, you don't have a reason to complain. So here I am, when I was first approached and asked to run, I was like, you are crazy, I am not the person. But the more I thought about it, the more I realized that I would be angry if I didn't give it a shot. I would be angry if they were to come back into office and I didn't have my voice heard. I would be angry if there were decisions that were being made that didn't reflect everybody in Ottawa County, and that is not okay. As a county commissioner, you need to represent everybody in your district, and I have a very large district. I have a district that covers a lot of different things, it's very rural, we have a lot of farmers, a lot of people that have been there their entire life, and they need to be represented. So that's what I'm going to do.
And finally, Dick Van Daum is also a candidate in District 11.
Well, I had a speech, but I just had a bunch of emojis blocking it out. What do you do? I'm Dick Van Daum, and I am running from the 11th district. Who here is from the 11th district? Who had to pack a lunch and make hotel reservations? Okay? If you're from 96th Avenue East and North of the River, that's the 11th district. It's Talmadge, Wright, Crockery, Chester, and Pulte Townships, and the city of Coopersville, and that's two breaths for an old man like me. I was born and raised in Western Michigan, I grew up in Norton Shores, attended Mona Shores, graduated from Hope College, Political Science, Josh, there we go. I'm retired from federal law enforcement, I'm retired from the Navy Reserve as an intelligence officer, I'm retired as a minister. My being here tonight shows you, I don't handle retirement very well. But hey, I'm the last speaker, you ought to get an amen, huh? For me, service has been my life. I remember as my kids were growing up, I've been married to my wife for 52 years, we have five kids and 14 grandkids, half of whom attended or are attending the Coopersville district. Growing up, I was my kid's T-ball and Little League coach, I did umpiring, that's the second least thankful job I had, after spending 27 years in the IRS. A life of service. I served there, I served in law enforcement, served in the military, served in ministry. I spent six years on the public school board, I know how boards work, yes, Iowa was a little bit bigger in scope, but I know how boards work. And we made a difference when I was on the school board in Kennel Hills in the late 90s. There's nothing I can say about what I hope to do with the board that hasn't already been said, and very eloquently by a number of candidates. I want to see us, I want to see us make decisions asking the right questions. You can't make a good decision if you don't have input from a wide variety of perspectives, and if you don't ask the right questions. Can we do this? Should we do this? What is this going to cost upfront? What are the ramifications down the road of this decision? Do we want to do this should be way down the list. Listen, I'm a minister, I can't do this in 30 seconds, I need three minutes, I need 30 minutes. Yes, I hope to serve and serve well, I'm an encourager, I like to get other people involved. Right now, serving as the head of our care team at Coopersville Reform Church. I'm getting a lot of people involved in doing ministry, helping people in the neighborhood. I'm going to be a real fan of Facebook Marketplace. Ladies, I appreciate you putting this on, and I look forward to all of you getting up, stretching your legs, meeting and greeting. Thank you, and have a safe night, and keep smiling.
I want to thank the audience, you were very good, respectful listeners, and some of you standing that whole time. So thank you very much for coming, for being interested, keep watching for more opportunities to get to know the candidates. Let's give the candidates a big hand. Well done, well done. Well, we learned a lot about each of you. And now, we are going to have the candidates go to their tables around the room, and you can talk with them individually. So again, thank you so much for coming today. Candidates, there's water here.
It's nice to meet you. Water.